I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Corangelo.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar. Ms. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong. Mrs. Reese. Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum. Please rise to sit over at this lady.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in public meeting, and these subjects are, with the exception of the Open Public Meetings Act, and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education attends to discuss matters as follows: Those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Objection. Motion carries. Thank you. We shall return in approximately an hour. Okay, welcome back. Before we get to the good stuff, we just have a small amount of administrative items. So if you'll bear with us for just another minute, and I apologize for the long wait, we do have to do our annual reorganization actions. We have thirty-nine items this evening, and if no one has any objections, I am going to make, ask for a motion to combine items one through thirty-nine. Mr. Corangelo.
Second.
Mrs. Becker. Is there any discussion? No. All in favor?
Let's do a roll call.
You want to do a roll call?
I think there might be some.
I didn't see any. Oh, there is. Oh, I missed one. I'm sorry. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Ms. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. Bringing us to Dr. Valesky's report for the evening.
Thank you, President Lacks. Good evening, everyone. On Thursday, May fourth, the ESL department hosted its last literacy night of the school year. Students and their families were asked to share a recipe of a dish from their culture that would be published in a cookbook. The recipes were written in the family's native language and in English. Over one hundred recipes were collected and made into a cookbook, which was distributed to the students and their families at the Dive Into a Great Dish Potluck. Over sixty families contributed to the potluck. The dishes shared came from Korea, China, Egypt, Armenia, Peru, Mexico, Portugal, Brazil, Japan, Ukraine, Philippines, and Russia, just to name a few. On Tuesday evening, May ninth, along with Board President Lori Lacks and Mayor Cohen, I enjoy the adult school year-end celebration. Eight students were honored for obtaining their American citizenship this year, and we also heard from various English-as-a-second-language and high-school equivalency students. Ann-Marie Gilbert welcomed all the guests, students, and faculty, and spoke about the program. The celebration ended with a song led by one of our ESL teachers, who's also one of our German teachers, Brian Lavery, leading the students in their rendition of The Beatles' "A Hard Day's Night." Everyone enjoyed homemade dishes made by students and teachers, and it was a very special evening to honor these adult students and challenges they have overcome. And it was interesting, Ann-Marie and Brian shared that non-English-speaking students, they actually started them out using music as an avenue to begin learning English. It was very interesting. The annual art walk will be displayed from May twelfth to June twelfth in the center of the municipal complex. This year, we have about ninety signs that will be installed, each displaying two to four different pieces of art representing grades K to twelve. Additionally, this year, the students enrolled in the music production courses from Hammershold, Churchill, and the high school, under the instruction of Alex Delbar, Eric Stur, and Zachary Gates, have composed music to accompany the viewing experience. The high school marching band is open to all eighth and twelfth-grade students and will begin their 2023 season with an interest meeting for new families on May sixteenth at seven P.M. The meeting will occur at the high school in room eleven oh one. Please contact Brian Toth for more information. And just a few reminders: Friday, May twenty-sixth is a single-session day for students and staff. Lunch will be served for grades K to six. Monday, May twenty-ninth, schools will be closed. And finally, as per our district calendar, if schools are not closed for any reason through Friday, May twenty-sixth, then Tuesday, May thirtieth, I'll repeat that, May thirtieth, will be a non-school day for students and ten-month staff only. So if you're not ten-month staff, you've got to come to work. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, now, the moment we've all been waiting for in this very, very patient audience, I am going to invite the Board of Education members and the administrators to come and
Are we good? Yeah, there we are. Good evening once again, and welcome to the 2023 East Brunswick Public Schools Staff Award Celebration. Nothing is more evident in East Brunswick than our strive for excellence each day. It is our mantra. We put it on our letterheads and documents to remind ourselves and people we communicate with that excellence is our quest. And using the word excellence is inspiring, but we cannot achieve excellence without professionals at every level of our organization who emulate that excellence each day. And tonight, we get to celebrate our teacher and support staff honorees who represent every single school and facility in our district. And tonight, you will hear what makes each of them so special. And from the people who know their exploits best, their principles. And I want to give thanks to the family and friends who are gathered here tonight in support of our award winners. We know the work, the achievements, the excellence at East Brunswick cannot be achieved without a support network outside of this organization. So tonight, we will also honor those individuals who have endured, or most importantly, thrived for twenty-five years here at East Brunswick. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce our board president, Mrs. Lori Lacks.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. See, you stole the show. No. So I could talk forever about the staff, but I'm not going to because there's some really exciting things going to be said. But I do want to echo something Dr. Valesky said. We always boast how we offer excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts, and that is because of our staff. Because you are the people that, year after year, come and make our students so successful. So every time we give those student awards or accolades, we know this is where it's coming from. And just like our Wall of Honor, this is one of my other favorite nights because we do get to call out some of you. And what I find so interesting is not that we are lacking the people each year to come up with new support staff and Support Staff of the Year, but the fact that it's so difficult because you have such great choices. So I'm looking forward to hearing from all the principals about the people in their buildings, and for the people that have done twenty-five years of service in East Brunswick, that's what makes us so great because we have the longevity. And unfortunately, for some of us who did go to the high school, we are getting rapidly to an age where twenty-five is certainly past it. Unfortunately, you were not here when any of us were here, which is probably good for you. So I am going to say on behalf of the Board of Education, you're going to hear lots of congratulations this evening, but a hearty one from us because we truly, as board members, as parents, some of us alumni, we do appreciate everything that's being done here in the district. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Lacks. Now I'd like to invite Mr. Mike Waldermuth, who's Vice President of the East Brunswick Education Association, to say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. First, I just wanted to share, our president Dana Zambicki is sorry she couldn't make it this evening. Her son Hunter is graduating at Rutgers today, so this was an important day for her family. So, I do events at the county, at the state level, and I get questions all the time, you know, "Oh, what district are you from?" And when I tell them I'm from East Brunswick, two things are frequently said to me. One, "Oh, that's a really good district. Oh, yeah. How many blue ribbons do you have?" People are amazed that I teach in East Brunswick. And the second thing that is said to me very often is, "Ooh, they work really hard there, too. That's a really tough district to work in." And I have to tell you, I'm in year twenty-three here at East Brunswick High School, and I work my buns off day in and day out, and I've never been recognized for this award. And that says a lot. Because you, tonight, are being recognized by your colleagues for your greatness in this district, day in and day out, showing up and being great. That's what you are. And for those of you who've been here for twenty-five years, since nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, the days of AOL, dial-up modems, integrated carbon paper forms, thank you. Thank you for sticking it out here. Thank you for making this district what it is on behalf of the East Brunswick Education Association. Enjoy this evening and enjoy this recognition for you. Thank you.
Now I feel like I'm a cat if I don't say "thank you, Mike," because you didn't get the award. Now I'd like to invite Mrs. Joanna Schmullerwitz, President of the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association, who would like to say a few things to you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. Good evening, everyone. I'm thrilled to be here tonight on behalf of the East Brunswick Principal and Supervisors Association to recognize tonight's recipients. Having the opportunity to talk about East Brunswick's finest teachers and support staff members is a treat. It's no secret that I have a deep affection for and admiration for people who work in education. Teaching is a passion. It lives in a person's bloodstream, and it sticks with them forever. And I feel fortunate that I personally have three generations of educators in my family. To tell you why, I have to tell you a story about my mother. At fifty-four years old, my mother became a widow, and she had never really held a job outside of our house. And she went back to school, and she got her associate's degree at Middlesex County College because she wanted to get a job in education. At that point, she'd never driven a car or had a job outside of retail since she was a very young woman. And Mom finally realized what she wanted to be when she grew up at fifty-four. She wanted to be someone who worked in education. And she worked for over twenty years in the East Brunswick Public Schools as an instructional aide. She retired at seventy. I hope to never have that happen to me. And she loved every minute of the work, but she had very definite ideas about how educational staff should be treated. She was from Brooklyn, which means she had very definite opinions about everything. When I became a teacher, she told me, "The most important people in your building are the secretary and the custodian, and you better treat them right." As with all sage advice, you pass that on, so my daughter's now a teacher, and I told her the same thing. When I became a principal, my mom gave me more sage advice. She said, "Don't ever forget where you came from. Always remember what it was like to be a teacher. Remember how hard the work is. Remember the dedication it takes to do it well." I have never forgotten those words. It has formed every interaction and intention that I have ever had with teachers and staff. All the members of the East Brunswick Principal and Supervisors Association feel so fortunate to be surrounded by excellence from all of our teachers and support staff. And I personally have been lucky to work in many of our schools and witnessed their magic firsthand. Tonight's recipients, like their predecessors before them, are the heart and soul of this district. Tonight, we're here to recognize the best of the best in East Brunswick's public schools, a group of individuals who do this work because they love it, because they're dedicated to the success of our students, and most importantly, because they know that the work they do makes a difference for our children. On behalf of the East Brunswick Principal and Supervisors Association, it is with deep appreciation and gratitude that we thank you all for your work in East Brunswick. As administrators, we know how valuable your contributions are to our children's success. Congratulations.
And now finally, to get these festivities kicked off, I'd like to invite Nicole Tibbetts, Director of Human Resources, up to start things off.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. Good evening, welcome, and thank you all for joining us here tonight for our Staff Awards Ceremony, because it's your presence that makes this night extra special. Tonight, with the help of our eleven principals and central office administrators, we will bring to life the stories of twenty-four outstanding staff members in East Brunswick Public Schools. Each one of our honorees is what contributes to the excellence of our schools.
Good evening. I am Kristin Christina, and I am the proud principal at Bowman Row Elementary School, and I am honored to tell you about our Bowman Row Teacher of the Year for 2022, Mrs. Rachel If you could imagine the quintessential first-grade teacher, you might envision a teacher that is loving, warm, nurturing, kind, and calm. Rachel Thompson is that teacher and more. While the daily interactions of a first-grade classroom can get quite spirited, Rachel is known by her colleagues to have the patience of a saint. Rachel's positive attitude is exactly what first graders need in a teacher. Rachel makes learning fun. She understands the various needs and mixed abilities of the students in her classroom. She works hard to create instruction that maximizes each child's potential, and she does an amazing job developing lessons that encourage self-confidence, kindness, and respect. In addition to the magic Rachel produces in her classroom, she is also an integral part of our Bowman Row community. Rachel serves as a mentor for new teachers, sharing ideas and lessons with others, and Rachel is also a lifelong learner herself. She's eager to try out new curricula and dive into new professional development opportunities. Rachel has been an active member of the Bowman Row Skip Committee, the Data Team, and our School Climate Committee. Throughout the years, she has been a leader in the creation and execution of the Bowman Row Learner and Leader Program, the Buddy Mentor Program, and she also collaborates with the staff to create activities that promote social, emotional wellness and awareness for our multi-grade family circles. Rachel, on behalf of the entire staff, we are lucky to work alongside of you each day. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor as Bowman Row Teacher of the Year. The Bowman Row 2022 Support Staff of the Year winner is Mrs. Sherri Binder. For twenty-five years, Sherri has been the principal secretary at Bowman Row Elementary School, and anybody who has worked there in that time will agree that she is the heart and soul of our school. Sherri is the person who keeps all things running smoothly for the staff and for the students and their families. Sherri truly does it all, but most importantly, she does it with care and with love, and that's what sets her apart from the rest. The main office at Bow is usually bustling with teachers throughout the school day. Some are coming to pick up their mail, others are coming to make copies, but many are there just to speak to Sherri. Whether you need an emergency stash of two-pocket folders or you just want to chat, Sherri is always there for you. She patiently assists with the planning of last-minute substitute coverages. She supports our teachers with budgeting and supplies, the arrangement of school trips and clubs, and planning any and all school events. Somehow, with all of this happening, she manages to answer the always-ringing phone with her warmest "Good morning, Bowman Row." Our families rely on Sherri to help answer their questions about registration, attendance, school programs, and events. She knows which students are getting picked up early and which ones are coming in late. When students forget their lunchboxes or their instruments or their water bottles, Mrs. Binder allows them to call home to tell their parents. She'll provide students with crayons and a coloring book if they get stuck in the office because they forgot their coat on a cold day during recess. And if your parent is late to pick you up, Mrs. Binder is known to play a mean game of tic-tac-toe, but she'll never let you win. Sherri's patience and love for our students and their families goes above and beyond expectations. Truly, Sherri is the matriarch of Bowman Row. She's the party planner and the event coordinator. She sees to it that each staff member is cared for in happy times and in difficult times. Sherri is the glue that holds our Bowman Row family together. We are so grateful to you and for all that you do for us, Mrs. Binder.
Good evening. My name is Tom Husar, and I'm the very proud principal of Central Elementary School, and it is my pleasure to be here this evening to talk to you about Central School's two outstanding Staff Award winners. First, our Educator of the Year, Mrs. Shannon Keely. I'd really love to stay, and I'm hoping that there might be a spot for me in first grade. After getting the news last year that the fifth grade would be moving to Hammershold, I was sad to be losing so many talented teachers. So when that teacher came to me with that request, I felt like I could finally exhale. Central School's Educator of the Year is that teacher, Mrs. Shannon Keely. There are many, many reasons why Mrs. Keely is this year's winner, and it really has nothing to do with her wish to remain at Central, but my feeling of relief is emblematic of just how invaluable Mrs. Keely is to our school. You see, anyone needs advice on applying for a grant, you just see Mrs. Keely. Requesting something from the PTA, Mrs. Keely is the liaison, so she's the person to see for each and every need that you may have. Any new teacher needs a mentor? By now, you can see where I'm going with this. Mrs. Keely is truly indispensable. Earlier this year, Mrs. Keely came to me with an idea to run an evening event for parents and students, and wanted my permission to submit an EBEA grant to fund her crack-the-code reading concept. I said one word: Brilliant! Of course, the grant was enthusiastically approved, and the event was a tremendous success. With that being said, what always impresses me most about Mrs. Keely is what she does day in and day out in her classroom. Her impact on students of all ability levels is truly what makes her so special. Mrs. Keely has this incredible knack for knowing just how to reach each and every student. We talk all of the time in East Brunswick about meeting the needs of all learners, and that is exactly what Mrs. Keely prioritizes each and every day. Finally, Mrs. Keely is a positive force in our building. She is never without a smile, never without her can-do attitude, always ready to say, "What can I do to help?" Well, tonight, it's not about how you can help us, but for us to celebrate you. Central Support Staff winner this year is the person with the most infectious and loudest laugh in our building, Officer Willie Dickey. Sometimes the trickiest part of announcing the winners is exactly how to do it, but when it came time to make this announcement, I knew exactly what it had to include: students, lots of students. A great school security officer, of course, helps to keep our building safe, but they also make connections with kids. Many times, those are deep and lasting connections. For example, we had a young man last year who was going through a tough time, and too often seemed sad. My student assistant specialist and I tried many strategies, but we just weren't able to break through. Officer Willie came to us and said, "Please send him to me after lunch tomorrow. I think I could reach him." I will never forget walking towards the office at the other end of the hallway the next day and seeing Officer Willie and the young man locking eyes as they sat on a bench and spoke. It was a touching and powerful moment, and one that is emblematic of how Officer Willie feels for the welfare of our students. One day turned into multiple, as that student began to seek out Officer Willie. Our students cared deeply about him. At Central School, we have a wonderful event each year called the March Madness Reading Challenge, where each class competes against each other for the right to play in the staff versus students basketball game. Here is a letter that I received from a student who was part of the winning third-grade class. Dear Mr. Husar, my class won from March Madness, so as you know, my class will be playing in the basketball game. Unfortunately, I will not be able to participate because I have to leave school early that day. I was wondering if I could nominate someone to play in my place. If so, I nominate Mr. Willie. Thank you, Catherine. If you know Officer Willie, you know why that letter and those talks with that young man are why he is being celebrated this evening.
My name is Christine Shea, and I am the principal of Murray A. Chittick School. I am honored to work side by side with an incredibly talented and dedicated staff of professionals who exhibit their commitment to our amazing Chittick students each and every day. When I speak of talent and dedication, our 2023 Teacher of the Year recipient, Samantha Wiseman, is no exception. Samantha has been teaching kindergarten at Chittick School for seven years. Her first two years at Chittick were spent as an in-class support teacher. For the last five years, she has been honing her craft as a kindergarten general education teacher. Over Samantha's seven-year tenure, she has made a memorable impact on her students and their families. Samantha is a dedicated teacher whose high level of enthusiasm, approachability, demeanor, and innate compassion equates to a positive, nurturing, learning environment. She embraces the whole child and works diligently to foster homeschool connections. Samantha's skill set is impressive. She sets her standards high, not only for herself, but for her students. Samantha leads in sp- Samantha leads, inspires, and fosters a reciprocal interaction with her students that results in a successful learning experience for students of all learning abilities and backgrounds. For example, in Samantha’s classroom, English language learners acquire language and literacy skills at rates comparable to their English-speaking peers. Their willingness to take risks and communicate in the target language is a true testament to her ability to create a safe and secure learning environment. Her commitment to evidence-based, data-driven instruction is immediately observable when you enter her classroom. She propels her students forward to meet developmental, academic, and linguistic goals. Samantha is also a consummate colleague and collaborator. Not only does she engage in professional conversations with her kindergarten teaching partners, but she is also an integral and respected member of the Chittick School and district staff. She is always willing to share her craft and mentor others in order to raise the level of instruction for all students. It is my extreme honor to award Samantha Wiseman, Chittick Schools’ 2023 Teacher of the Year. Patricia Zimmerman is Chittick’s 2023 Support Staff winner. Patty has been employed as a student-assigned instructional assistant by the East Brunswick School District for eight years. Luckily for us, she has been at Chittick School for the last three. Patty describes the staff and students at Chittick School as “my second family. I feel very lucky to work with such wonderful people.” Patty, that feeling is resoundingly reciprocated by all of us at Chittick. Patty is described by her colleagues as someone who goes above and beyond for the students in the class, supporting and guiding them academically and emotionally. She exhibits superior concern for the education and the well-being of her students. She shows up every day wanting to make a positive impact. Patty has an uncanny ability to de-escalate challenging situations in a dignified manner. She makes a difference in students’ lives. Patty also has a wonderful rapport with her colleagues. If anyone needs help, she is always one of the first to assist. In the words of one of her teaching partners, Patty is the most positive person. Even when the days are challenging, she stays composed. She is very professional and speaks to everyone with respect. Patty is someone that teachers trust to share ideas and provide relevant feedback. She is willing to learn interventions to implement with her students. Chittick School is a better place because of Patty Zimmerman. I am elated to present Chittick Schools’ 2023 Support Staff Award to Patricia Zimmerman.
Good evening. My name is Niree Delgado, and I am the principal of Frost Elementary School. I’m here tonight to speak to you about Frost Elementary School’s Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Jody Croup. Mrs. Croup has been an integral part of the development of our kindergarten students for over 25 years. She is the first person a five-year-old meets when they walk through the doors on their first day of school, and the teacher that they remember on their graduation day. For over 25 years, she has led our kindergarten team, navigated the challenges from a half-day to a full-day kindergarten program, incorporated aides, ruled the academic wave, and embraced learning through play. Walking into Ms. Croup’s kindergarten classroom, you find a dichotomy of tradition: rigor and high expectations. You might witness puppet play, block building with our students, or even playing dress-up. An hour later, they’re writing books about interplanetary travel and building three-dimensional polygons. You’ll almost never hear Mrs. Croup raise her voice. She doesn’t have to. A stern look and a raised eyebrow stops mischief in their tracks every time. Jody Croup makes it look effortless, but we all know that’s the furthest thing from the truth. The impact of a teacher lasts a lifetime. Not long ago, a police officer came to our school just to visit while he was in the area. We were speaking, and he told me that he attended Frost when he was a child. A smile immediately came across his face, and he said, “Is Ms. Croup still here?” I said, “Of course.” I asked Ms. Albert to escort him back to her room, and before he left, he stopped by to talk to me for a while about all of the memories he had while he was with Ms. Croup. And he said, “I really didn’t even need an escort. She’s still in the same room.” Mrs. Croup is an advocate for her students, and she builds relationships with parents that last a lifetime. We are so honored to present this award to Mrs. Croup today. The love and dedication she has to this craft is unmatched. Kindergarten is a very special grade level, where students learn to love learning. It takes a very special educator to find the child within themselves, to bring out the best in the students that they teach. One day is not enough. One award is not enough to show our appreciation. However, the lives that you have impacted is the reward that never fades. Thank you, Mrs. Croup, for being who you are and being Frost Elementary School’s Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Denise McCool. I am so honored and privileged to speak about an individual who tries to stand in the shadows, but her energy and demeanor always bring her right into the spotlight. The work that Mrs. McCool does as an instructional aide in our ERi program speaks volumes to her love of teaching and learning. Mrs. McCool can sense things before they happen. She’s forever proactive and never reactive. She never shies away from jumping right in to calm and refocus her students. She sets her expectations, and every student strives to meet her where she sets them. But accountability is her staple, and she sticks to it. When I wanted to present this award to Mrs. McCool, I wanted it to be a surprise. The only way I knew it would work is to have it linked to her students. We told her that a student was in my office because he was having difficulty. I planned it with the student to have him wait in my office with the flowers and a certificate. I went to Ms. McCool and told her, “I need your assistance.” She ran so fast down the hallway to assist me. She said, “I wonder what the problem could be. We were just outside doing our breathing exercises.” I had no idea Mrs. McCool had a secret talent: a track star. When it comes to her students, there is no limit. The patience Ms. McCool shows is amazing and speaks to how well she knows her children. She connects with them socially, emotionally, and intellectually. If they love red pandas, she loves red pandas. She can read a room and adjust and save the day just like that. Mrs. McCool is flexible and a joy to work with. She is—I’m sorry. She pitches in and helps to get the job done and with any student that crosses her path. Ms. McCool totally invests in herself when it comes to her students. She knows how to crawl under, climb over, and run through to help her students. There isn’t anything she won’t do for someone she cares about, and she cares about all of her students. The work that the ERi instructional aides perform is not easy by any means, and they do it in such a subtle manner that many don’t even recognize what they do to ensure that we can do what we do. I call Ms. McCool the quiet storm. She works hard every day to ensure her students meet the goal set and strives towards positive academic outcomes. I tell the Frost family that as an instructional leader of a building, I am forever a student, and I learn something from you every day, Ms. McCool. Ms. McCool, this acknowledgement is not only for you, but for all of the instructional aides that help make our instructional days possible. Ms. McCool, we congratulate you on being Frost School Support Staff Member of the Year, and we thank you.
I’m back. Good evening. I am Joanne Chamelot. It’s the very proud principal of Irwin School. I don’t know if you know this or not, but some teachers have superpowers. Irwin School Teacher of the Year, Mary Blaska, is one of them. Mary is a kid whisperer. She has the ability to communicate and connect with students in a manner that forges deep relationships, trust, and affection. She spends time with students and can pinpoint needs, figure out a learning goal when students are struggling, or facilitate a friendship when a new student joins the class. When we discuss student placement every year, we always have a student where we say, “Mary would be a perfect fit for them.” We know that she will have an intrinsic ability to find the best skills and traits in those students that allow them to flourish in her classroom. She can intuitively understand the right way to connect with students and meet them where they’re at, but then bring them forward as scholars. Mary’s been a teacher at Irwin School for the past 30 years, an accomplishment in and of itself. Her dedication and service to Irwin School students is evident in her classroom every day. She is creative and innovative. She embraces new ideas and changes in curriculum, and she’s quick to say, “We’ll make it work.” Mary has also spent a lot of time giving back to the Irwin community. She’s served on many committees, mentored new teachers and students, and served as a teacher-leader throughout her many years as Irwin. She’s done this all while raising her own two children, being a sports mom, and taking care of her family. As I said at the start, she’s a lady with superpowers. We feel so fortunate to have her on our team. Please join me in expressing our congratulations to Irwin School’s Teacher of the Year, Mary Blaska. I am delighted to talk to you tonight about Irwin School Support Staff Member of the Year, Lynn Cordilla. Lynn joined Team Irwin in July 2020 as our school secretary. Over the years, she’s served in many other roles since starting in the district in 2002, but we feel really lucky to have her make Irwin her home. I don’t even have a speech bubble all the way out of my mouth before Lynn is already on any request I make of her. She is a person in perpetual motion, working incredibly hard and ensuring that every detail is taken care of. She is also compassionate, caring, and very giving of her time and talents. Lynn is a native New Yorker, and one of my favorite traits about her is her forthright way of dealing with things. She makes our front-office team laugh aloud when she has a crazy situation occur, and her response is, “Seriously? All right, I got it.” And this is also where her New York accent comes out in force. Lynn is a dedicated mom to her two daughters, Jennifer and Samantha, both of whom are EBE alumni. Her pride in the two of them is evident, and I can tell that no matter what, their mom has their back. She is loyalty personified. If Lynn were ever to take up a new profession, it would probably be therapist, a role she informally fills in the main office. She intuitively knows if someone is having a tough day and can say, “I can tell something’s the matter. What do you need? Or how can I help?” Whether it’s a student who left their lunchbox on the bus, a frantic teacher who needs to use the copier—and of course, it just broke—, or a principal who has nine meetings that day and forgot to have lunch, Lynn is there for all of us. Irwin School is thrilled to have Lynn Cordilla as our Support Staff Member of the Year. Congratulations, Lynn.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Dunn, and I am the very proud principal of Lawrence Brook Elementary School. It is a true honor to be here this evening to honor the Lawrence Brook Educator of the Year, the amazing Colleen Swack. Mrs. Swack has been an East Brunswick Public Schools’ first-grade teacher for 19 years, all of which have been spent at Lawrence Brook Elementary School. In fact, she even completed her student teaching at LB under the guidance of the phenomenal Mrs. Nita Landman and Mrs. Marla Newman. Colleen is known throughout the building for her leadership, kindness, and dedication to her students. In fact, she is one of the most collaborative professionals with whom I have had the pleasure of working. It is not unusual for her to reach out on school days, evenings, and even weekends—sometimes late into the weekend—to share an idea or teaching strategy. Many of her colleagues seek her support and guidance, and if you know Colleen, you know that she is always willing to share her expertise and brainstorm the best approach to reach any student. Colleen is always open to exploring the teaching style or method that will support specific learning needs of the children in her classroom. The result is a classroom characterized by enthusiasm, excitement, and a true shared love of learning. Colleen has also led building and district-wide professional development, helping us all to learn more about best practices for early literacy instruction. Mrs. Swack is always searching for new resources and methods to improve her practice. Colleen’s commitment to ongoing learning is truly inspirational. At home, Colleen is supported by her loving husband and two amazing sons, Eddie and Joey. We are also joined this evening by her parents, sister, and mother-in-law. Colleen, you are truly deserving of this honor. Thank you for all you do for your students, their families, and your colleagues. The example you set inside and outside of the classroom is truly exceptional. Please help me congratulate Lawrence Brook Elementary School’s Teacher of the Year, Colleen Swack. This evening, I am also honored to recognize the amazing Cindy Vendici, a staff member who is beloved by students and staff alike. Please join me in a round of applause. As an instructional assistant in our autism program, Cindy goes above and beyond each day to support the needs of Lawrence Brook students and to promote our mission of acceptance and inclusion. Whether she is assisting a student during calendar time, supporting learning during instruction, promoting positive interactions during play centers, or helping students to build friendships with one another during luncheon recess, Mrs. Vendici exudes a positive, calming energy that brightens any environment she is in. calming energy that brightens any environment she is in. And Cindy has been bringing that positivity and caring to EBPS for over twenty years. During that time, she has held positions as a substitute teacher, lunch aide, security aide, and instructional assistant, and she has worked at all but two of our district
I'm Cheryl Jones, principal of Memorial Elementary School, and I'm here to introduce
schools.
our very special Teacher and Support Staff of the Year winners from the 2023 school
We are proud to say that she started her career in EB at Lawrence Brook Elementary School, and we are lucky to have her back in our building once again.
year. Samantha Berman is a special education teacher at Memorial School.
On a personal note, I feel extremely fortunate to start each day on morning duty with Mrs.
Dedicated, engaging, motivating, and energetic are just a few ways to describe Sam.
Vendici, welcoming students into the building during morning drop-off. The warmth and excitement with which she welcomes her students is unmatched, and she
Sam has a wonderful rapport with her students.
has also become a friendly face and trusted adult for all children entering the building.
As a special education teacher, she is skilled at knowing her students' needs and finding ways to best support them.
Cindy is joined this evening by her husband and her daughter Chelsea, and though we know
On top of being a great teacher for her students, she brings a positive energy to
she does not relish being the center of attention, we can all agree that she is incredibly deserving
the staff in our building. She was always willing to help the school and her coworkers.
of this special honor.
She has been a mentor to many teachers and a trustworthy colleague to go to in a time
Thank you, Mrs. Vendici, for supporting a strong culture for learning in your classroom
of need.
and our school.
Sam has also taken the initiative of being the head of the Sunshine Committee in our
Your genuine positivity and caring nature inspires us all.
school and has also been designing Memorial School spirit wear.
Please help me congratulate Lawrence Brook Elementary School's Support Staff Member of
We are proud to have her be our Teacher of the Year because she brings a positive energy
the Year, Cindy Vendici.
to our school with both students and staff. Congratulations to Memorial School's Teacher of the Year for 2023, Samantha Berman. Next, meet Memorial School's 2023 Support Staff Winner, Amber Liberto. I can't say enough wonderful things about Amber, the staff lover and the students lover. We would be lost without her. She has an understanding of literally every aspect of the school, from knowing most of the students' names by heart, what bus they take, and more. She always jumps right in to help in many ways. She goes above and beyond to meet all her responsibilities and duties while also having strong relationships with all the staff who work with her. Many people do their job well, but Amber does her job exceptionally well. We are all so grateful for Amber. Amber is responsible, dependable, and fair. It is a true pleasure to work with her. Tonight, we congratulate Amber Liberto as a Memorial School Support Staff Winner for 2023.
I'm Joe Sutari, principal of Warrens Dorfer Elementary School. And I want you to think for a moment of the best teacher that you've ever had, the, your favorite actor, the best talk show host you've ever heard, and your favorite comedian. And put them all together, and you have Warrens Dorfer's Teacher of the Year, Cara Johnson. Cara is a twenty-one-year veteran Warrens Dorfer teacher. She taught first grade for eleven years, and she's currently an essential leader of our awesome fourth-grade team. Her students and her colleagues love her. This is what her team had to say about her teaching. Cara understands her students and makes engagement and fun a priority while still keeping expectations for learning very, very high. When a student is upset or struggling with a concept, Cara makes the situation funny by lightening the mood so the student can move on and be successful. Cara's teaching is similar to an actor getting into a character before a play, and I can tell you, this is, they're absolutely right. I once heard her during a mini lesson talking about a visit to Amish country, and she was very animated, as Cara is, kind of arms all over the place, and, you know, it involved a radio report about a tiger escaping from a local zoo, a neighborhood flyer about a lost cat, her lunch missing from the backseat of her car, claw marks on her new leather seats, and something about micro-stitch, whatever that is. Realistic fiction indeed. I can't remember really how the story ended, but I could see her students sitting there, eyes wide open, and I can't wait again to read the realistic fiction stories from her class. Cara has mentored many new teachers in our school. She leads professional learning communities. She invites colleagues into her room to collaborate. Her classroom has been a model lab classroom for teachers, college, staff development, and she has served on many curriculum committees over the years. Her involvement in the Warrens Dorfer community extends beyond the classroom. She is a past EBEA representative. She is the faculty council liaison representing the fourth-grade team. She leads our Sunshine Committee, and she's very involved with our PTA and EBEF. Along with our students and staff, who are very proud to have her as a teacher and colleague, Cara has a loving family who are also very proud of her. In the audience tonight to share Cara's special night are her son Mason, and her daughter Olivia, and her husband, Richard. I thank all of you for sharing such a wonderful person and a wonderful teacher with us. It is with great pride on behalf of our school community that I congratulate Cara Johnson as Warrens Dorfer's Teacher of the Year. Mariana Melick is kind, caring, and compassionate, and she does an incredible job working with an incredible group of students. For these reasons and more, Mariana Melick is Warrens Dorfer's Support Staff of the Year. Mariana has been part of East Brunswick School District Special Education Department for over ten years. She began working at Chittick School, and we are very fortunate to have her as part of our autism classes at Warrens Dorfer Elementary School. As an instructional assistant, she is knowledgeable and enthusiastic. She clearly loves her students, and they grow each day as a result of her dedication and attention to detail. She also is extremely helpful to our school and our community. She gets involved, and she's willing to help wherever she is needed. She's bilingual and helps with our office staff and our ESL teachers and students when in need of translation. She's patient with our students and has an amazing impact on them. She's the proud mother of two daughters, Amy, who is a sophomore at East Brunswick High School, and Jolie, who is taking, who's studying to be a doctor, and she's taking her finals, so she can't be here tonight. And her husband and her mother are here tonight to celebrate with us and honor Warrens Dorfer's Support Staff Member of the Year, Mariana Melick.
My name is Mike Gascoigne, the principal at Hammershold Upper Elementary. Pleasure to be here tonight to honor some really great people and to see some other great honorees. It is with great honor and admiration that I recognize Mrs. Christine Connolly. Hammershold, as I was saying, Hammershold Upper Elementary School's 2023 Teacher of the Year. As a Language Arts and Social Studies teacher, she has shown exemplary dedication to her craft, and her commitment to her students' success goes far beyond the classroom. Mrs. Connolly is an inspiration for both her students and her colleagues and me. Her passion for teaching is clear as she brings to life the wonders of literature and history, igniting a love for learning in her students. Her ability to connect with students on a personal level and make the subject matter relevant and engaging is truly innovative. Her impact doesn't end with exceptional teaching skills. She's also successfully implemented our restorative service program, what we call RSP, at Hughes, that has transformed our school community. Through her visionary dedication, Mrs. Connolly has fostered a safe and inclusive space where students can learn to resolve conflicts, repair harm, and develop empathy and understanding. Mrs. Connolly shows unwavering compassion and care for her students' well-being. Her commitment to the, to the social studies and emotional growth of her students is truly remarkable, and her impact on their lives will be felt long after they leave our school. Mrs. Connolly's excellence in teaching and her innovative approach to restorative service are an inspiration to us all at Hughes. Her dedication, passion, and unwavering commitment to the success of her students are exemplary. She serves as a role model for her colleagues, and her willingness to share her expertise, collaborate, and support others is truly commendable. And to add to this recognition, I was honored to join Mrs. Connolly as a Teacher of Magic, this year selected by ninety-eight point three for her accomplishments. I also got to meet her really cool Irish husband. Can't tell you what we talked about. This outside-school special recognition further supports how outstanding she is as a teacher -- there was only a dozen of them -- and colleague, mentor, and friend to me and many others at Hammershold. Mrs. Connolly, thank you for being you. Humble as you are, I get to embarrass you one last time. It is for all these reasons I share it and so much more that our students, colleagues, parents, and administrators, we recognize you for all the outstanding work you do for our school community. Congratulations. It is with great pleasure that we recognize an extraordinary person who's made her mark on our school community. Someone who's consistently gone above and beyond in her role as a school instructional aide, showed unparalleled dedication to her work, and today we celebrate Eileen Hensberger as Hammershold's Support Staff of the Year Honoree. Eileen is an integral part of our school, and her impact can be felt in many parts of our campus. She embodies the spirit of going the extra mile, not only for her students but for every teacher she collaborates with. Eileen takes the initiative without being asked, and she's always one step ahead in anticipating the needs of those around her, not just the students, by the way. She's a true team player, always willing to lend a helping hand and provide support whenever it's needed. But what truly sets Eileen apart is her genuine care and compassion for everyone she comes in contact with. She takes the time to get to know her students and colleagues on a deeper level, forming meaningful connections that last a lifetime. Her ability to build relationships is truly remarkable. Eileen brings a sense of joy and comfort into any room she walks into. She's that person who just lights it up, brightening the atmosphere with her warm presence and infectious smile. Eileen's unwavering focus on her students is a testament to her exceptional character and exemplary professionalism. As we celebrate Eileen here today as Hammershold Support Staff of the Year Honoree, I'd like to express my deepest gratitude for her outstanding contributions on behalf of our school community and, most importantly, those kids. Her selfless dedication and compassionate heart make her truly deserving of this honor. Thank you for being an inspiration to all of us and for making a lasting difference in the lives of the children you support. Congratulations, Eileen.
I'm a proud principal at Churchill Junior High School, and tonight I'd like you to meet two of Churchill Junior High School superstars. First, our 2022-2023 Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Catherine Merton. Kathy is a veteran English teacher who began her career in East Brunswick in 1989. She has impressed students, teachers, and administrators with her incredible instructional skills, her kind, friendly, and inviting personality, and her ability to garner the respect and rapport of her students and her classes. It goes without saying that Kathy embodies selflessness when it comes to serving the Churchill community. She is a co-founder of the Churchill Junior High School Butterfly Effect Project, an initiative implemented to motivate members of our community to engage in random acts of kindness that help others. One nominator wrote, "She continues to inspire everyone in her presence, whether kids or adults. Her students know how much they are loved by her demeanor and her caring ways." Kathy has a big heart and is always the first to offer her assistance to anyone in need. She pours her heart into creating lessons that engage her students in the English curriculum. She has a gift for bringing literature to life, whether it's using articles, music, movies, and other media. Come by Kathy's classroom on any day, and you will see students engaged in meaningful discussions and writing activities. And after school is over, you will often see Kathy's room filled with students who are working on projects related to the butterfly effect. Whether it is teaching English, modeling responsible behavior, or spreading kindness, Kathy does it all. When you talk to Kathy about her job, you immediately understand that her students are what inspires her. Their well-being and their success are always at the forefront of her mind. Congratulations to Churchill's Teacher of the Year for 2022-2023, Mrs. Kathy Merton. Now, let's meet Churchill's Support Staff Winner of the Year for the 2022-2023 school year, Mrs. Samantha Akolsky. Everyone in the building knows that Sam is the dependable manager in the Churchill cafeteria. She began her career as a member of the child nutrition team at Churchill in 2009. She oversees staffing, ordering food, preparing the food, cleanliness, and she has a solution for every challenge that might arise in our very busy cafeteria. In March 2020, when schools transitioned to full remote learning due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Sam and her team continued to provide meals not only to Churchill students but the entire East Brunswick Public School community. the entire East Brunswick Public School community and families using a grab-and-go style at Churchill Junior High School. Despite the health challenges, she oversaw the preparation of meals and facilitated the delivery of food using a drive-up-style process. This grab-and-go offering continued into the 2020-2021 school year, when some students continued to learn remotely at home. When we transitioned to a new block schedule format in the 2021-2022 school year, our lunch format changed from four lunch periods to three lunch periods. Sam had to lead her team to implement new health and safety measures for serving food while still maintaining an efficient system to serve 1,400 students. And this year, in 2022-2023, we saw the addition of 7th grade at Churchill. 2,000 students in four lunch periods? No problem for Sam. We added an additional period back to our lunch schedule, and Sam continues to lead our child nutrition team to provide healthy and hot meals to all of our students. In addition, she and her team helped to roll out new and expanded menu choices this year with an additional serving area to meet the needs of our students. Sam goes above and beyond to help with serving breakfast lunch and meals for other events such as the 9th grade semi-formal. She takes great pride in serving Churchill students and leading our child nutrition team. So this year, we proudly name Sam as Churchill Junior High School Support Staff Winner of the Year.
Good evening. My name is Mike Vanello, principal of East Brunswick High School. I'd like to start by congratulating all of our award winners this evening and thank you for making excellence come alive for our students. I am honored this year to share with you the EBHS Teacher of the Year, Ms. Reza Berkovich. Berkovich is known to her department as Rita, is an outstanding educator that has been here since she began teaching in the 1980s. Her love of teaching every student is what sets her apart. She always finds a way to connect and show her students she cares because she truly does. When you walk into her classroom, you might not see the bells and whistles, but what you will see is an engaged group of students that want to learn from her many years of expertise. Will it be easy? Probably not. But her students are challenged and held to the highest standard. Many of her students reach out to her when they are in college to let her know they are so appreciative of the valuable lessons she taught them and how those lessons have helped them in college. She is never too busy to explain a topic to a colleague. As well as, we all know, she loves to explain that, yes, there is always a right way in math. Rita, I am so very honored to bestow this treasure on you as Teacher of the Year for East Brunswick High School this 2023 year. Rita, congratulations. It's honor and privilege to also share East Brunswick High School Support Staff Winner of the Year, Ms. Terri Farrow. Terri has been at EBHS as the bookkeeper for EBHS as well athletics since 2014. Terri streamlined the financial procedures for the high school and the athletics department, and she has never looked back. She ensures that all records are in compliance, and she performs all duties in an effective, efficient, and timely manner. And may I say, sometimes she does this even if her folders may have to wait until the student and staff matters are met. They got it. It's an East Brunswick High School thing. Terri goes above and beyond her job duties by helping wherever she is needed. Teachers and advisors rely on Terri for valuable advice and know they will get the correct information. Terri is a valuable member of the EBHS staff. She is well-deserving of this award, and is with the utmost happiness that I recognize Terri Farrow as EBHS Support Staff of the Year.
My name is Joyce Forsberg, and I'm the senior manager of the Transportation Department for East Brunswick Public Schools. Tonight, we're here to celebrate our Support Staff Person of the Year, Mrs. Geraldine Don't get nervous, I won't embarrass you. Geraldine began her journey working for East Brunswick Public School in September of 2000. She worked at the security desk in Lawrence Brook Elementary, and she also worked at the after-school program with Irwin and Warrenstorfer Elementary School. After concluding one journey within the district, she moved on to the next. In August 2007, she ventured to the Transportation Department. Geraldine had an amazing knack with this department, where she spent 15 more years with complete dedication to her position, the drivers, and everything it entailed. She was and still is an amazing spirit within the office, even though she has now retired. The transportation team absolutely adored her, and the parents of the district knew her well. She would answer thousands of phone calls a day, direct buses to destinations, and she handled bus issues without batting an eye. She would map out bus routes and made sure all was completed to perfection. Geraldine, you are an amazing, kind, and special spirit. We are so honored to have had the pleasure of working alongside you in the Transportation Office. You made a difference every day. You worked within this district, and we all commend you for all you have done. Congratulations on this accomplishment and making Employee of the Year. We certainly miss you, and we thank you for being a major component of our amazing team. And this is love from your number-one fans and your transportation team. Please help me congratulate Geraldine Napoli as the Support Operations Support Staff Member
I have the honor of speaking on behalf of the John R. Kopko Administration Building's Support Staff Winner of the Year, Catherine Mahmoud. To say Catherine is a valuable resource for the entire East Brunswick District is an understatement. Catherine wears many hats in human resources, and she wears them all very well. From helping a new employee navigate their newly chosen career to ensuring each member of the HR team is successful in their role in the department, Catherine is the driving force in HR. She sees each new teacher through the certification process and can cut through any red tape in her way. She is a mentor to many and a great resource to all. It is common knowledge that if you have a certification question, ask Catherine. If you want to know if an employee's certification was issued, ask Catherine. If you want to know someone's start date, ask Catherine. She knows if their file is complete or if it's not. She can tell you what they're missing. She has a keen knack of rattling off who each recommended new hire is replacing with ease. She wrote the book on thinking outside the box to solve the problem and always says yes when asked to take on a new project. Catherine is patient, kind, and thorough. One of her greatest assets is her sense of humor. It is this gift that will let you know, that she will let you know in the nicest way that you are wrong. She is the unofficial mother to all of our staff. Each member of HR will tell you that her mind is a steel trap. She remembers everything. Each week, she processes hundreds of pieces of information and rarely makes an error. She's beyond organized and wants everything to be perfect for the HR team and all staff. She is no-nonsense personified and takes enormous pride in everything she does for the district. She is truly the backbone of the Human Resources Department. With the help of the other ladies in the office and her take-charge attitude, she keeps the HR department running effortlessly. She's kind, caring, and will go out of her way to get the job done as efficiently as possible. If you know Catherine, then you know there is no mystery as to why she is so deserving of this honor, as she is truly a pleasure to work with. Nearly all of you have probably spoken on the phone with her. Tonight, you get to see her in person. Please help me congratulate the Administration Building's 2023 Support Staff Winner, Catherine The night's not over yet. Now, we are excited to recognize those that have devoted 25 years of service to our students. Secretary of Bound Monroe, Ms. Sherry Binder. Churchill Junior High School English teacher, Cheryl Frank. East Brunswick High School Social Studies teacher, Robert Ganji. Child nutrition worker at Churchill Junior High School, Barbara Gargano. English teacher at Churchill Junior High School, Colleen Talbot. LDTC for the district, Alexandra Ulrich. Child nutrition worker at Irwin Elementary School, Marie Velche. And a few others who couldn't be here with us tonight, but we still want to recognize: Sherry Kofinas, Sylvia Coles, Lorna Fitzpatrick-Lawrie, Kelly Koloff Loftus, Renee Sakadato-Dutka, Linda Soto-Lee, and Carla Murray. Thank you all very much for joining us tonight. Now, I'll turn the meeting back over to Mrs. Lacks.
Thank you, Mrs. Tibbetts. I am going to call for a quick recess, about five minutes or so. For the board members, put for all the honorees, please. I believe there are freshmen's next door. Congratulations again. I hope everyone had a wonderful evening. We really enjoyed being a part of it, and enjoy this evening. Okay, welcome back. We are going to continue with the evening after that fun, fun high. That was very exciting. And moving on, we're going to start with the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Board policy says you will be limited to three minutes duration. That will be kept by our Board Secretary, and we always like to remind the public, this is a time that you get to speak to the Board. Please don't mistake our silence for not caring about the issues. And I don't see -- well, I see some members of the staff down there. We always ask that if you do have follow-up needed, please -- oh, there, the lovely ladies in the back. I'm sorry, ladies. Please make sure that Janet and Karen in the back have information on how to contact you. That being said, are there any members this evening that wish to speak to the Board? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion and move on with our Board of Education items. May I please have a motion for items 1 through 4 under our Board of Education?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Winston.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gloss. Are there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Ms. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for the one item under Community Programs this evening?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. May I please have a motion for items 1 and 2 under Curriculum Instruction this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Winston.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Ms. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for the one item under Facilities this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Winston, second by Mrs. Becker. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. May I please have a motion for Financial Services, items 1 through 5 this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Corangelo, second by Mrs. Becker. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Ms. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yep.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for our one item on human resources this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Winston.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Becker. Any discussion? The secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Ms. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. And lastly, may I please have a motion for the one item under Student Services? Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Bringing us to new end of --
I'm sorry.